I'm not made a practice of following the Select Board, but because of my interest here, I did follow last week, and I see how much time and effort and care that you all put in, and I want to say thank you.
Thank you, Dorothy. Okay, I am going to close public comment. And there are no additions to the agenda. Oh, do we have, we have documents to sign?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have minutes from August 11th. All were present, but Whitney.
Okay, do I hear a motion? Which, which one is this?
August 11th.
August 11th. Do I hear a motion to accept the minutes of August 11?
I make a motion to accept them.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have August 18th minutes. All were present except for me.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to accept the August 18th minutes.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Steen.
Aye.
Is that it?
Nope. And minutes for September 2nd, all were present.
Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion, we accept the minutes for September 2nd.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is that it?
There's one other document, and that is the public entertainment license for Finelli, which we're not talking about, but I'll pass that around for signature.
Okay. All right. Okay, appointments? Steve?
All right, so first up, we have Jonathan Spiegel and Kirk Stevens from the EDIC. They're going to provide the board with an update tonight. Jonathan and Kirk had some documents prepared. I passed those out earlier. One is a history of the previous development and the tax revenue that has been generated from that. And the other document is a written history and narrative of all the activities that the EDIC has done over the years. So those are in front of you, and I'll let Kirk and Jonathan explain what you have.
That's great. Thank you. You know, I really want to make sure the public hears this as well. So, John, do you mind sharing?
I have a booming voice, anyway.
Well...
But we need it for the...
We need it for the recording. So, if you want to maybe pull up a chair and just, so that we can have the public hear
My name is Kirk Stevens, and this is Bob Vard, Cheryl Dutton, and Jonathan Spiegel. And Jonathan's going to start us off with a, with a brief synopsis of where we've been,
My name is Jonathan Spiegel. Been a member of the EDIC for a while, and involved in redevelopment of the state school property specifically since the state school closed. So, tonight, we've been asked by the Select Board to engage in a discussion, starting with a brief update of what we've been up to and where things are right now, and then a dialogue about your goals and hopes and expectations, and how we can all move forward together to make that happen. So I want to start off with some basic information, much of which is available in the posted minutes of the EDIC, as well as the annual town report.
Do you want to chair for the mic? I'm just, you look like you're, you've got everything jostled.
(laughing).
I know, I'm saying it.
At the EDIC, we're used to acting like that. We have to balance 97 things at once. But it's a good suggestion, thank you. Thanks, John.
There.
Okay. So, the Belcher Town for the, for the public, and in general, the EDIC was formed by an act of legislature in 1982. It was a, an act which tried to formalize and improve the efforts of the town of Belcher Town to find reuses of the former Belcher Town State School property, which was in the process of closing. It didn't all close at once, it closed over several years. And the town had made numerous efforts, committees, reuse committees were formed, town meetings, charrettes were held to, to generate ideas for what the property could be used for. And a series of attempts were made over the years to actually find both large developers and individual businesses to take on part or whole of the entire site to, to develop. We had a number of very large efforts, one which began actually at the very beginning of the EDIC even before, where some of you may remember Dick Clark of American Bandstand fame created an initiative to fund and establish a retirement home for retired musicians. It was a really important issue for him. They put out an RFP to have a location and a development for that purpose. Belcher Town submitted, and nationally, we were number two. Didn't get us anywhere, but we were number two, so we made a good effort. A lot of people in town were involved in that. That was one of the first big ones. We had a number of parts of the property develop under different developers. Most visible is the triangle between Route 21 and Route 202, where numerous businesses are now located. We had an effort by a developer to create what initially was intended to be a spa. We convinced them that Belcher Town never really envisioned a spa, and that didn't work, mostly because of funding. And we had a very large national developer come to us and get very close to signing with us for the property. Weston Solutions of West Chester, Pennsylvania, and they visited the site numerous times. But that one didn't get to fruition either. Along the way, we had Mass Development come to us with support of the legislature and the state government to begin organizing and managing the development process. And they have been with us since, the most recent agreement has been since 2012, and we've been working very closely with them to develop the property. One of the results of that work together with Mass Development has been the establishment of over 25 businesses on parts of the property that have been sold or under ground lease to various businesses here in town over the years, 25 different businesses. There were 14 entities listed in the tax rolls, and last year, according to our tax collector, and Bob did the research on this just yesterday, the annual tax levy on those properties is in the range of $325,000 for this most recent tax collection period, $325,000. The numbers of people working in those businesses is multiple of dozens. We don't have an exact count because it keeps increasing and changing. But many people are employed here in town. Just this past year, we had another business come to the property in an existing building, and a second business expands significantly right where Front Street and Carriage Grove meet. We did ground development work with the town. The town voted and installed a roadway of 1,000 feet, I believe, approximately, and the town put together bonding for that road, it was a million plus. Steve, thank you. And that is now in place, connecting Jackson Street with Front Street or out to Route 202. We now have what amounts to 37 pad-ready acres, which we did not have when we started work. Mass Development estimates that with them and through the legislature and our grant writing, we have brought to the site somewhere in the neighborhood of $18 million to help move it from a disaster zone, which we were, we paid $10 for, but got very little help with initially, to the kind of situation we have now, where most of it is now pad-ready. There are only three buildings remaining to be removed. Most of the tunnels and other infrastructure has been removed, and the, we are diligently working to find a solution for the administration building. It is, has always been our intent to have that remain as a legacy building, a reminder of the past, but also a view towards the future, with numerous different activities happening inside that structure. We are currently under a memorandum of agreement with a, a development firm, initially Brissa Development, which had as its partner Sydney Capital. As what, as typically happens in large development projects, the memorandum of agreement was assigned to Sydney Capital, and it is in the process of being transferred. Sydney Capital essentially is the same set of people, it's just a different financial arrangement. Mass Development is helping us clarify the, all of the due diligence relative to that kind of transfer, and the capability of the new named entity, Sydney Capital. Sydney Capital was an original element of the original agreement, anyway. So it's our understanding that these kinds of assignments tend to happen as financing is put together, and we'll be able to report on that hopefully within the next four weeks. The due diligence is still ongoing by Mass Development. In addition to all the work that we've done on the site, we've also transferred to the town 68 acres for recreation purposes. We have collaborated with the town's trail effort to provide access, both across our property and in, to assure that access with, in all development plans that we put forward. Speaking of which, the town voted a town meeting to approve the master plan and reapprove that just a few years ago. So we're working on a master plan that has, for the main campus, in outline form, four phases, the first of which is currently being developed by Sydney Capital, previously Brissa Our relationship with Mass Development has been tremendously supportive. We've learned a lot along the way. They have been great in bringing to us state resources, which helped clear the campus, and they continue to do so. Our agreement with them is up for renewal at the end of this year, calendar year, and we have been in discussions with them about how to approach that, and hopefully, we will be able to continue, we expect that we will be able to continue working with them and with their guidance. They have staff and skills, engineers and lawyers, et cetera, we do not have. And so they act as our agents in this effort, and we wouldn't be able to do what we've done without them, even though we made some good attempts in the past. So, let me stop, that's, that's a bit of history, and kind of an update of where we're at currently. I'd like to stop and see if members of the Select Board have any specific questions about the background or the history, before we get into a dialogue.
My question isn't so much about the history, but can you talk about what the intent is of Brissa, what businesses or residential that they're looking to bring in?
Okay. The Phase 1 development is categorized as affordable housing, and the affordable housing is not low-cost housing. It is a income-based assortment of various levels of income to allow for diversity of renters to live in the property. At our recent meeting, we were informed by them that of the 105 units that are planned in Phase 1, 13 are at 30% of the state property level, 40 will be at 40%, 23 will be at 60%, and 27 at 80%. These are state levels that are established across the state. Anyone who rents within one of those categories will have to re-clarify, re-affirm, re-clarify their status each year that they're renting there. This is very different than what is typically thought of as low-cost housing, which often is called Section 8 housing, under the housing state laws. This is something which we have established with the developer and part of our development plan. Affordable housing was part of that plan approved at town meeting, and it's designed to find housing for people who are struggling to find it in the open market, in the open housing market at market, full market rates. These are people, often hourly workers or retired people, whose income is fixed or low, lower, and that is the plan.
The other phases?
The other phases have not been designed yet and scheduled. The other phases in our master plan call for various levels of support for seniors and senior housing. We hope to have a, a broad continuum of care built from behind where the current Christopher Heights is. There's lots of land that goes back that way to the border of the property. And what we intend by continuum of care is a more intensive unit that can handle those who are in need of more medical assistance or other kinds of care, right down to more independent living for seniors, including some senior 55 and older eventually housing.
I just want to write-size the timeline, so that the public understands how long it's going to take before we can see shovels in the ground and completion.
Phase 1 was contracted with Brissa originally to start shovels in the ground in 2029 and be completed and occupied by the end of 2029. That is the original agreement. Whether that's going to be possible or not, we are exploring that, both with Brissa's currently Sydney Development, now Sydney Development. And we're going to be exploring with that developer how we can speed things up, and what, what future phases might look like, given what it's taking to do these phases. We are engaging with Mass Development, with their guidance, their legal help, to look at all of those agreements, and to take a look at where it might be possible to do anything differently. And that may, may or may not include Sydney Development in future phases. This is something for discussion, we have not taken it anywhere with either Sydney Development or with the attorneys at Mass Development. I guess what I want to say is that both the EDIC and Mass Development feel that we need to look at alternative ways of moving this forward.
Any other questions? Okay.
No?
I think...
I have a question.
I know.
So what I really would like to hear from you all is what you expect from us, and what maybe you would like to see us be doing differently, or more of, or less of.
Well, that's interesting, because that was going to be my question to you.
Ah.
You know, what, what do you want to see more of or less of from the Select Board? What's the call to action for, for the town manager, for the Select Board, for community members who may express some frustration around timelines?
Yeah.
So I, I'm going to ask you to go first.
Oh, thank you, I've already been going.
Well, you're all warmed up.
Can I jump in here for just a minute?
Cool.
Okay.
I would say that one of the largest constraints that we've had to deal with was a power plant that was contaminated, and the state put us on the $10 million funding line that we expended in order to remove buildings, abate the asbestos in a lot of places, truck things to Pennsylvania and Carolina, shipped everything to other places. That was too contaminated to bury here. You know, Mass Development is the development partner, also working in other places like Pittsburgh to do something with the Air Force Base in Pittsburgh. So, these are complex problems that, you know, the way they built the buildings originally, there are a lot of materials that can't be buried locally that we have to truck out of state. Takes a lot of funds to do that. So we've, we've burned through $10 million of state bonds with the help of Mass Development. We're at the turning point. We've turned a big corner here with the removal of, you know, the smokestack and the coal piles and the soils around those coal piles and the materials that were used. We abated materials in a lot of the buildings. There are still a few buildings that remain, but we're confident that we can find solutions to those in the coming years, as we find prospects and developers that want to step in and move the business here. We have, we have the best views in the valley right now, now that the smokestack is gone. So, you know, I think that in our efforts, we've talked to an awful lot of people, we've had, you know, proposals that sounded very nice on paper that were fine in style, but we feel like we, we have, in Brissa and in Sydney Capital, and, you know, the arrangements that they have, that they're working in a neighborhood community, they're putting up buildings now, and they're, they're local folks, some of them have roots in Springfield. So, we feel like this is a pretty solid route, that we've turned a corner with the power plant, as I said, and we're going to see some substantial product in the not-too-distant future. The world is beautiful.
Thank you.
Walking paths, walking paved areas on both sides, and we see it all the time.
And thank you, thank you for your work on that. That's, that, that's wonderful. That, I, I thought there was going to be a second half of what, you know, based on that, this is how the Select Board can help, or this is how Steve can help, or this is how the community can help. The one thing we all have in common, I think, is we all want to see economic development move forward as quickly and as efficiently as possible. And, you know, this board and Steve have made a commitment this year that economic development is a top priority. So, again, I'll ask, you know, how can we help? Oh, yes.
Oh, hi.
I am so sorry. Jen, did you have something to say?
It's totally fine. I just want to go back to Jonathan's request, or question back about what, you know, the expectations are of the EDIC, and your, your follow-up, which is what can we do? And I think that, you know, we've talked about this a little bit at the EDIC meetings, about how we have just invested in a marketing effort on behalf of the town, and I think that what we could expect is more marketing of the properties and marketing of the town in general, and we have to do it all together with our town manager and with the Select Board. We all need to be having that comprehensive, like, look, an overview, and networking when we're talking to outside folks, whoever they might be, developers or what have you, because we can't bring in businesses without infrastructure, which means we need buildings, right? Like, you can't market the town without some sort of infrastructure, which means big developers. So we need to be going to, like, the Developers Conference in October, like, is any members of the EDIC attending? Like, I'm planning on going to that, so that we can network with the folks who are there in the room on that day. So, you know, in sort, in terms of expectations for the EDIC, I would ask that, you know, we're going to be putting in that effort, could you guys also commit to putting in some of that effort also?
So I do have an answer for your question. And all of you have attended our meetings, and I want to thank you for that. It's really important that you, that we are all connected together in this effort. One of the things the EDIC is doing is to distribute the load of doing this particular tough activity of marketing Belcher Town. We all believe that Belcher Town is a great, wonderful place to live. Not, the rest of the universe doesn't necessarily see it that way, and it's our job to bring it to them. Cheryl Dutton is going to take on responsibility for the whole communication effort from the EDIC. So we're going to be distributing some of the activities and responsibilities to members more specifically and officially, and that will include outreach to town groups and elements and the whole marketing process. And that will include outreach to town groups and elements and the whole marketing process. How we, let me start that differently. Mass Development is technically our agent. Everything has to flow through them, but initial contacts and expressions of interest from a business or a developer or some other entity can come to anybody. It's important to bring that interest to a member of the EDIC so that we can explain the property, that we can show the property. I mean, the town can, anybody can be out there, but it is actually technically private property and which we pay insurance on every year. And then there is a process for exploring formally with a business or a developer the right fit with Belcher Town, given the conditions under which someone would have to buy in to the property. And Mass Development handles that with us. There are legal channels that have to be followed, but it doesn't slow things down. And so I guess what I want to say is a kind of a closing statement. It's important for everybody in town who wants to see this property properly developed to think about who they know that has a business that might come here, who they know that has some kind of opportunity to start a business, to come here. And encourage them to meet with us, to begin exploring their ideas, even if it's not fully formed yet. Our goal is to completely build out that property. And there's plenty of space there. There are several other parcels. The front parcel, let me just say quickly one thing about how we view the property. We want something to wind up on that property, even if it's done in pieces, so that, in such a way that it adds to the town, in such a way that it is something we all are going to be proud of. We don't want it to wind up like an industrial park that you can see in other communities. And that's not only to be able to continue to develop it, but also for the business entities that make the commitment, make the investment, to be there. So we, for example, on that front piece on Route 202, seven and a half acres, we have a concept that we like to share with potential businesses, developers, which would look something like, not exactly like, but something like South Hadley Commons, where buildings have an interesting configuration, where there might be work, live-work kinds of arrangements possible, and where different businesses could be, and restaurants and other kinds of activities occur in that space. But we don't want to limit people from their own, limit potential businesses to exercise their own creativity. But we are very clear that we do not want to see it turn out to be something that the town would wish looked differently. So that's one of the things that we discuss with potential buyers. And they also appreciate that. Not everybody wants to be in a space like that, but many do. So that's one of our commitments. So anyone, whether it be a member of the board, a member of a town department, or citizens in the town, bring those ideas forward. Bring those potential businesses forward.
And how do they do that?
Contact somebody in the EDIC. Steve is often a place where people make contact relative to this, but he brings it to us very quickly. The process is not that your board or Steve or even the EDIC decides who should be there. The process is really about exploring with a potential business what the fit would look like, what the process looks like, and encouraging them to stay connected with us, to explore that, and ultimately be there.
Any other questions or comments? Steve? I have one. There seems to be a lot of stuff that's going on in the fall, and the answers seem like they will be clearer, I don't know, in December or January?
What will be?
Well, whether or not we stay with Sydney Capital, what's going on with Mass Development. So I wonder if we can invite you back once we know where...
Once the dust settles?
Yeah, that's a good way of putting it. Once the dust settles, so that we can report back to the town and let people know what the EDIC is doing.
Absolutely.
That and stay in touch with us. We're all going to be at your meeting.
Good.
Yep. As at our meetings. I mean, obviously, they're all open, they're all televised.
Right.
Right.
So like we were talking about, open dialogue, no matter what board or non-board you're on.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
And we do work closely with other boards in town on potential projects or projects that are underway already, or projects that they're working on where the site might be appropriate.
Doug has been very helpful, Doug Atworthson.
Yes.
Extremely. He's like another board member.
We meet the first and third Wednesdays of the month, starting at 6:00 PM. We changed our schedule and increased our meeting time and days. We've got a lot of work to do, as you pointed out.
So if you are interested in economic development and you want to work with other folks that are driving the bus, please attend the EDIC meetings.
Do you have an open seat?
We have an open seat.
Can you talk about the...
Okay, so that's a great idea. Thank you.
That's good.
The EDIC has a number of different seats designated for different types of membership, real estate, commercial, financial, at-large seat, which is what I'm on. And we have one in our founding documents designated as low income. It is a challenge to find someone who's not working three jobs, who qualifies, because the income requirement or threshold was set in 1982. We are going to contact our legislators to see if they can amend that. But it's important for so many reasons that the town's population, the broad population be represented. And that one seat has been vacant. I'm not prepared to, I don't know what the dollar number is.
$10,000.
$10,000. That's right. That's right.
Is it really?
Is the income limit?
Adjusted income.
Exactly. Well, like you said, it was implemented in '82.
Okay.
And it was a hard dollar amount in the legislative...
$10,000.
Exactly. So it's like, you know, when we first started meeting in the '90s, I think we had one gentleman who had retired and he was, and I, you know, but even then, he, you know, didn't stay because, you know, he was above the threshold. And, you know, so that's kind of languished ever since then. And like Jonathan pointed out, you know, it's like, hey, we got to get a hold of our legislative team, whomever, and just say, look at this. Change the legislation, because that's absurd.
Well, is that something we can help with?
Yeah, I guess, you know, when you asked me earlier if I had any comments, I probably should have said two things. One, first of all, you know, thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for all you've done. Some of you have been volunteering for this cause for...
Thirty years.
Decades. Right. But the second thing is, I'd be remiss if I didn't point out that Aaron Saunders has been following the activities on the Carriage Grove redevelopment faithfully.
Passionately.
And passionately, correct. He's very invested in this. He really wants to see something moving forward. So that's a plug for him. And yes, I did have a conversation with him recently about the low-income seat after the last EDIC meeting. It was brought up. The other thing that we're looking at doing in the EDIC is, which we don't see any barriers, but appointing non-voting associate members so people can show up and contribute. They just wouldn't have a vote. So those are all things that we're looking at and we're working to get there.
That's great, Steve.
What was his response when you spoke to him?
He's going to look into it. Yep, yep. So, you know, unfortunately, things in the government take time. You know, there's a lot of bureaucracy involved. You know, the advantage of bureaucracy is it's predictable, but the disadvantage is it slows the process down. So we're going to keep working with Aaron and see what we can do to get that resolved.
Yeah, yeah. Which is why, this is a great case in point, like, the more we work together, the more we know what's, you know, how we can help. Like, we want to help you be successful, so.
Great.
Because if you're successful, the town's successful, you know? So, and thank you. Thank you for doing that, Steve. That's great.
And it's important to come back to the beginning of this element of your meeting. There has been a lot that's happened, but it hasn't all happened yet. You know, the town has wonderful recreation areas now that are in full use and more planned to be used. Our parcel D on Route 21, we were very lucky to apply for and received a specific grant to examine what that might be used for. And we anticipate a conceptual plan that will lay out a series of lots with the boundaries of fungible and a roadway in the next several months.
Well, I look forward to those continued conversations, but in the interest of time, unless there are any other questions? Okay. Thank you so much, Jonathan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk. Cheryl, thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
So next up, we have our communications manager, Kate Nadeau. She's here to present the design options for our business cards going forward.
Okay, wait. Hold on one sec.
And I know business cards themselves may not sound that flashy, but this is a result of the branding effort, so it is exciting to know that we're actually applying those principles that we developed during the branding process.
That's great. Welcome, Kate.
With that, I'll turn it over. I think Kate's going to need a minute to...
Yeah. You were going to give me control so I could pull up the document that I shared with the Select Board.
Yeah, do you want, I made you an organizer. Do you want to be a presenter too? Or can you do that on your end?
I'm checking right now.
This candy is killing me.
Do you want to move it? Do you want to move it into the...
No, I want to eat it.
No, no. Do you want to move it so you can't, you're not looking at it?
No, I need you to share the presenter with me. I don't have it yet.
You're on.
There we go. Thank you. So thank you, guys, for taking the time to discuss business cards. I know it doesn't sound extravagant, but I do think the EDIC was a great intro into this, as we started discussing marketing the town more and getting in front of, you know, potential developers, as well as, you know, working with different municipalities as to, you know, we talked about what happened in South Hadley and, you know, if we're having meetings with them, you know, getting the Belcher Town brand out there some. So I had sent over in your packet some business cards for you to take a look at in there. And I started with looking at the town seals that we had previously, because we had discussed in our last meeting how we don't have the digital version of the town seal yet from the branding committee. I've looked over the time that I've spent on it, working on it, and I put in about 20 hours already, and it's maybe a third of the way there. So I don't foresee myself investing any more time in it. And that was broken out over the last, like, five or six weeks. Chris has spent some time, Chris Martin, from the Branding Communications Committee, also has spent some time looking at it, and he's put in, anywhere's between eight to 12 hours on it.
Wow.
It really is at a point where we're going to need to decide if we're going to put dedicated resources to this. I know the branding committee has not met in quite some time. There's been some scheduling issues, you know, some are, everyone's out. But at some point, we're going to have to decide whether or not we're going to put more resources into digitizing the seal. Right now, the condition that the seal's in, it's not really of great quality. So if we were to go with a business card that did have the town seal on it, I can't guarantee the quality of that. And if you start looking at, like, a better business card material, like, you know, a matte card or something like that, you're really going to lose a lot more of the detail that's already lost in this poor image. So those are just kind of things to keep in mind as we go through these. One of the things that the Select Board had charged me with after we had our last meeting was to reach out to other municipalities within Massachusetts and see what they're doing. Who's using logos? Who's using seals? Who's maybe doing both? Because we had thought in the end, maybe our solution would have both in it. And I did reach out to a number of them, but the one that really stuck with me the most was a conversation that I had with Jennifer McDonald over in Wakefield. And she is their communications director, so she's in a very similar position to where I am. We have similar backgrounds. It was really quite odd. But it was good to connect and talk about it some more. And one thing that she had pointed out to me, and I had included some of the slides that she had shared with me in the packet that I had sent over to you, was that they had upwards of 10 different town seals. I know, and we thought we had a lot with our, you know, three, maybe five, depending on where you were looking, who you were talking to, right? So they had a number of them. My computer has been very slow lately, so I do apologize if it's kind of lagging here. So you can see just on their business cards here, a short smattering of the business card options that they had and all these different versions of their town seals. So like us, they could colorize versions. They had black and white versions. They had some that were small, some that were big. They were all over the place. And then in the end, what they ended up with was going with a town logo, one-sided business card. It's considered a full-color design, even though it doesn't have a lot of colors to it. And when they first rolled this out, they were coming across people who were resisting the idea of having just the logo on the business card. And what happened is they had created an alternate version of their business card to make those people that really wanted a logo happy, and they would, or the seal, so they would, some people had the logo-only business card, and then some people had a logo-and-a-seal business card, because they insisted that they needed the seal. If we're able to avoid a situation like that, I think that would be in our best interest because really what we talked about last time was the need to be professional and approachable, right? The seal doesn't necessarily guarantee professionalism, especially with the quality that the seal is currently. So to put that seal on the business cards now is not going to provide any sort of professionalism to it. We also need to make sure that the cards are clean, they're easy to read, and there's consistency. And this consistency is really going to be critical in coming across as professionals. If we're showing up to meetings and we have people coming from all different departments to meet with people about a redevelopment project, and we are putting down 10 different business cards, even if we have seals on all of them, they're not going to be professional. And I had included in your packets some examples of some of the business cards that we are using here in town. And there is a wide range here. So there are the cards that we've been printing here in the Fintertie House for the Select Board and for Steve. There were, you know, cards that, you know, different departments have made for their uses. Some are far more professional than others. And then even like when you get into business cards within a department, such as, it's full screen on my end, but not on that end, so I'm having a, it's like huge.
Well, we have the packet.
But you have the packet. So like, the cards for the Board of Assessors, they're not even following the same, you know, style, if you will, of the symbol and the layout and everything else. They're similar, but...
They have a different font.
Exactly. The minute you look at them, you're not like, those are, that's the same department.
Yeah.
So that's something that we really need to make sure that we're looking at as we go forward. The consistency and that, you know, by putting the logo forth within the new business cards being kind of the first thing that we're putting out there in front of everybody, right? We're basically saying that the town, the Select Board, is approving of this new seal or this new logo, excuse me. or this new logo, excuse me, that we stand behind the logo and the work that the branding committee did. So, yes, the previous select board did a vote on the final logo, and it had the support then with the dissension being Ed, who's no longer on the board. But if we come back and say, eh, we're not sure we should use it on business cards, we're not sure we should use it here, not sure we should use it there, is that really showing that we fully support the work that the branding committee did in developing the logo? I have wondered a little bit since our last meeting if our logo is too approachable, if that makes any sense? And if we're afraid that we're not gonna get taken serious because our logo is too approachable. So, that's something to think about, too. So, you have the packet, you've seen some examples, I'm happy to answer any questions about them. I do have a couple more business cards that I came up with working with Ed and Chris on the communications committee since the branding committee is not meeting fully at this point. And I do have pricing for the different options.
Before we look at the ones that you put together, can I just ask a couple of clarifying questions?
Of course.
I feel like, and I can really not remember where I heard this, but is our clerk in agreement that a logo is acceptable on a business card?
She is not, and we had that discussion our last, the last time I presented here. I think you were out, but Whitney was here at that time. And she was in the meeting remotely, and I was here. And she had said that she wasn't in agreement with the logo being used in email signatures, letterhead, or business cards. And I had brought up the fact that we had a branding committee meeting, which was our last official one, which she attended, and we kinda read through the guidelines I had put forth. And while we didn't formally vote on them, no one in the room dissented to what those guidelines were. And those guidelines did present putting the logo on the business cards.
It's tough because I, I want, I, I wanna listen to what our clerk is saying, too, because I feel like she is the keeper of the seal. She knows where the seal should and shouldn't be. And so, that's a concern that I have of jumping right into this. For me, I kinda would wanna hear some buy-in from her on this. But I think the second part of my question is, before we start looking at these business cards, should you be getting buy-in from the branding committee as well? Because I don't think the branding committee has had any.
The branding committee has not had any. There was hopes that the branding committee would meet between that select board meeting and this select board meeting. One email was sent out looking to get that meeting scheduled, but it was not scheduled.
Right, so, I, I did talk to the chair, and I think what he said to me was, it's just a matter, he wants to be able to get Steve and Terry in a room, in a room at the same time for a meeting so that we, there's just a full consensus on how we move forward. So, I think that's what the delay is, is trying to find that date.
Yes, Terry's been on vacation, too, so.
But she's coming back, you know, next week, right?
I think she's back the 18th.
The eight, oh, so
So, later this week.
You know, so, because I do feel like this may be a little premature because not all the principals have had a chance to weigh in on this.
Sure. I do have a question for Nicole. Is it, do, do you feel that the issue with using the logo is because there's something in our bylaws that say we have to use the seal? Because we have examples from other municipalities in the Commonwealth that say
I don't even know that there's an issue. I think it's just, where's the disconnect between what Terry is saying and what these other communities are doing?
Sure.
I think it's just wanting to feel comfortable or having her at least say, okay, fine, I can get on board. You know, I just, I don't wanna make a decision without her at least saying, okay, fine, go ahead and do it. Or, you know, what, do you know what I mean? But I love, I, I know which one I love. I, I, you know, I, I'm ready to move forward with this, and, and I get what you're saying about the, is our logo too overwhelming? I get that, but I still love it, and so I don't care.
Me, I like the logo, too. Sorry, my voice is, I have allergies. I like the logo, too, but my concern is we're not, we, like, grant, we had grant funding for this logo, but it's fine, but the seal is the most important part of the town. We need to, there's a company out there that will just do this seal for us and digitize it. I talked to the town clerk, it's like between $5,000 and $6,000. We need to get that digitized and make that a priority before we focus on this logo and worry about the town as a whole with the seal and get that corrected first.
I don't think that's necessarily true if we can agree that the logo, that the seal does not need to be on a business card. I think you can have, I think we can walk and chew gum at the same time, but I think we first have to figure out if the seal has to be on here or not. I think that's the first thing.
Yeah, we, we still have to undo the seal, though, that's what I'm saying. We're still, we keep doing, we've spent so much time on a logo that doesn't even need to be anywhere, and we're forgetting about the seal, that is the, the priority.
The seal is not forgotten.
But it is the priority, though, we, that's what I'm saying.
So, the branding committee spent an exorbitant amount of time working on the town seal. It was not forgotten during the process. It was began first before we even began working on the logo, before we began doing any of the research for the logo. It was the first part that Kitty at Locality Studios started working on because it was such a priority to get this digitized version of our seal. There were, I wanna say, and correct me if I'm wrong, Nicole, if you know a different number, but I believe Katie submitted upwards of 30 versions of the town seal to Terry.
There is a company that can do this and get it right for us right away within a couple of weeks. That's what I'm saying, the seal is the most important thing, that's our legal documents, that's everything. Our focus should be on the seal. I, I mean, I like the logo, but we're forgetting about the main point that
I agree, I agree with you, John.
It's the business part that I'm concerned that the seal is getting forgot and the digitized version's not out there. We need to spend the money and get it done before we even waste time on a logo, not just
Are we, are we willing to, to put that money out there? Because when we began this process, we, we promised our voters that we were not gonna spend any tax dollars on this.
But the seal is, it's a legal minding obligation by the state of Massachusetts.
I'm not gonna worry about $5,000 or $6,000, I'm sorry. Like, that, like, if $5,000 or $6,000 is what's holding up the work on the seal, then I think we, we need to do our job to, to find that money. Wait, the, I think that personally, that the, the logo, it is beautiful, it is welcoming. But without the seal, it, it doesn't tell me that this is official. And I, I'm of the opinion that, that both the, the seal and the logo could be on this. And so that it does two things. It shows professionalism and approachability, which is the combination that I think this board, all agreed, would like to have. Disregarding the, the history of the seal in this town or somehow saying it's not important seems disrespectful.
I don't think I ever said that, and if I, if it came across that way, that was never my intent.
I'm not saying you personally, I'm just saying
Okay.
overall, it feels like we're not honoring our, our past.
It was, it was a core piece of this project to be able to do that. And it was, it was, we talked about it so much. We spent a lot of time on it. It was something that the branding committee absolutely wanted to ensure was done. And it, not just branding, but the communications committee and creative economy, everyone understands how important it is to have this piece. And we weren't able to cross the finish line.
Steve, can you, I don't know who's speaking or who's making noise, but, thank you.
Do you have the two?
Sorry, someone's dog just barked.
Yeah.
No, I muted.
I think it's Whitney.
Okay.
Whitney.
Whitney!
Can you, do you have the two-sided card that you could?
Can I make a comment about the seal? More, mostly for you.
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
So, we sat in here with Terry when Terry came with this proposal to go out to this other company. And I'd say, as a board and the liaison, we all loved what Terry brought forward. Because I think everyone on the, on the committee kinda felt like what, what Katie produced just wasn't, it just wasn't up to snuff. So, what we said in that meeting was, you know, we promised we weren't gonna spend taxpayer dollars on this. Is between Kate, Chris Martin, and Ed Knight, who all have this ability to do this kinda stuff, could, could we maybe do it, do it ourselves? And what, the comment that I made, and I don't know if you know this, but Margot Moran, who recently passed away, was the initial artist of, of our town seal. And I made the comment, you know, if we can get away with having a resident of this town do it, that would kind of carry on that legacy of having a resident do it rather than taking it to a vendor. Whether it's, even if it's $5,000 or $6,000 and it's not a ton of money, I really wanted to see a resident try and take a stab at it first, whether it's Kate, Chris, Ed, or a combination thereof. So, no one has forgotten our seal. I think we were just trying to see if we could keep that legacy going of having a Belcher Town person do it.
No, I mean, I'm fine with that, but we need to move past that threshold now and move on, if that makes sense, and get the seal done and organized and get it off our, our plate, everyone's plate. And then we can have both options in front of us. Right now, I have one option in front of me, and I can't make a decision because I don't have the other option either.
Yeah, so I did talk to the chair of the branding committee. Would've been about a week and a half ago, and he is trying to set up a meeting, but with Terry on vacation, we had a hard time doing that, so. Soon as she's back, we'll get a meeting together and, you know. I think Terry may have solicited a more firm quote rather than just a range, so we can have something to actually talk about. But if not, then I'll, I'll try to have that ready for that meeting.
It'd be good for CTC funds, too, if we can get it in time. This would be a great project for that.
Yeah, actually, you're right, yeah.
So, I mean, there's resources out there, not spending taxpayer dollars, but we could get this over the finish line, and we have everything presented in front of us to make a better decision.
And I do think that's important, too, because I think once we have the digitized seal and the way you see it on a business card with the other
Elements.
Elements, I was looking for a word to describe them, but done elements or, you know, curated elements, it'll look entirely different. It's kinda hard to visualize how it would look with the polished seal, like we saw the Wayland seal, with the version we have now.
Do you feel like between you, Chris, and Ed, you're at kind of a, in pass with moving forward? And that it is time to start looking for a professional to do this?
I, I do, like, I've been enjoying the work that I've been doing on it. But at 19 hours a week, it's, it's not a lot of time. And, you know, when you start designing, you wanna keep going with it, but you're like, you have all these other things, or you wait to start it because you did everything else that was on your plate, and then you only have like two hours, and once you really get into it, you're done, unfortunately. So, yeah, I think, I think that does make sense, and, and hopefully, we'll be able to get that next branding meeting going forward. The other piece of it, too, that I know everyone was worried about was, was the cost of the business cards and whether we needed one side, two sides, black and white, half-black, half-color, you know, mix and match, what kind of paper to use, is it gonna spike up the cost? So, I reached out to Amherst Copy because we have an account with them, kinda using it as a bar of, you know, where we can spend, knowing that, you know, modest earmarked $2,500 out of $50,000 for this bigger project towards these cards. And we could get 50 employees double-sided, full-color cards within that $2,500.
But how much are we spending on business cards now comparatively?
So, there's no way to really know because some people are printing them themselves, and we don't necessarily have the cost of the number of times people have bought the paper for them, right? Some people go out to, when I asked the department heads where they were getting their cards from, we're getting cards from like six different vendors.
So, that sounds like a, a systems change, you know? Like, like a policy change is what I'm trying to get at. So that we're using one vendor and, you know, all business cards from, go to that one vendor? Are you guys talking about that?
Yeah, that would kinda be the next step in the process. Because we can also, like, we can stay with a local vendor, one of the many that were used to print the cards, including Amherst Copy, or we could look at moving to an online vendor, like a Vista Print or something, where they set up a template for us, and it's just plug-and-play, you just type in the information. So, as soon as somebody has a new position or a new employee, you just type it in, and away it goes, and it doesn't ever need to come across the communication manager's desk or anything like that to create a new card.
I guess I'd like to know how much we're spending on business cards throughout the whole town? Because if you have $2,500 in standby, that could be part for the seal to get done. I'm just saying, if there's already a budget for business cards built into our budget, why do we need that $2,500?
Well, I don't, that's modest earmarked it for getting the logo out.
I know, but this is, this is grant money, I'm assuming.
Correct, it's grant money that she has that's earmarked for getting the logo publicized, if you will.
Well, that, we could take the business card money, then, and move it to the seal part, then. Either way, you could, either way, you could move the money around. We need to know where that money is being spent, then, how much is being spent.
I think, I think we're all in agreement that, you know, we, we have to focus on the seal. And, I mean, Jen, do you have anything else to add?
Can I ask, out of the cards that were shown, if there was a preference? So that way, once the seal's done, if you want me to slap the seal into one or all of them, I could do that.
Well, I, I think I'd wanna know the cost, like, the difference if you do. Are these all double-sided?
So, there's one single-sided card in there. The single-sided card is $43.99 for $2.50, so $44 for $2.50. Whereas a double-sided, full-color card is $50, so it's a $6 difference.
Is card number one single-sided?
Yes, card number one is the one that's single-sided. And then I have an example up here on the screen of like an alternate that I came up with, working a little bit with, you know, just with some feedback.
Oh.
Yeah, and then this one has the, you know, the Massachusetts under it, which I think, you know, if we went with something like this, we might wanna put the Massachusetts under. I think it gives it a little something extra.
I love that.
And you have your seal and your logo.
It has everything.
I like that.
It's nice.
I guess the only thing I would add is it needs to be on nice paper.
Yes, so I did ask Amherst Copy, like, how much is my price gonna change if I go with a matte paper of a premium stock versus if I go with, you know, the standard glossy stock? And they said if we got the cards from them, and I have it in an email, that there is no price change between changing paper types.
Okay, that's good, good job.
So, one of the things that I liked about 2A was the QR code. I worry, though, with what's up there, is it getting too busy to add a QR code also?
So, this one here, to add a QR code here.
Yeah, maybe on the backside underneath the Belcher Town logo, or is that just too much?
I can certainly play with this one some more to look at adding a QR code to it. I had, someone had given me feedback with like, what would happen if you like took the opacity down on the town seal?
If you took the what down?
The opacity of it.
Okay.
The opacity is at 100%, so it's as bright as it could possibly be. So, to reduce the opacity kinda gives it like a shadow effect, which is what you were seeing when you were looking at like business cards four and 4A in the examples. How you had the, you can't even see it on the screen. But how you can see the two cards like side by side with the shadow effect. It's the seal in black with the opacity turned down. Just kinda like a softening effect, if you will.
Kate, you've done really great work. So, you know, on behalf of the board, thank you, you know?
I do like that second card with the one with the Massachusetts, can you go? It's that one.
You know, I do have one comment about the Massachusetts, and maybe this is
Were they one and only one?
We are the one and only.
We are the one and only, yes, absolutely. I feel like it grounds the seal, though, the logo, it grounds the logo.
I like it, too.
That's, that's why I like it, is I feel like it just finishes it.
It does, yeah.
It does.
But we could also put the one and only.
Yeah, that would be cool.
So, I feel like the next step is kind of getting Nate to pull a meeting together so that we can figure out how we're moving forward with the seal. I mean, I still kind of am like, I really would like to see a Belcher Town resident finish it out to carry that on.
I mean, if we can get it, that's great, if we can't, we need to
I guess I, I wanna hear from that group of three on how close they really are.
Yeah, soon as Terry comes back, I can speak to her about getting a meeting together, and we can go from
Yeah, soon as Terry comes back, I can speak to her about getting a meeting together, and we can go from there.
And I can, um, my plan was after this meeting anyways, was to send all of these materials over to Nate Shattuck to let her know how the meeting went, you know. Esther's team at BCTV is great at bookmarking the chapter, so I was going to send him a copy of the meeting, say the meeting started at, you know, forty-six minutes and twenty-eight seconds, so you can hear the conversation, and let him get caught up that way too, with all of the materials. And then, you know, I can also send him over the work that I've done on the seal, and then send Chris and Ed messages separately as well, so we're not doing committee work outside of the committee, and ask them to forward their versions of where they're at to Nate as well, too.
Perfect, thank you.
Of course. Do you guys have anything else for me tonight?
Just thank you.
Thank you. I did want to mention that our next thing on the agenda was, is a sign request, so this will be the test run of the sign form, so thank you.
Okay, well, as John rightly pointed out, Discussion A, Request to Place Signs on Town Property.
Yeah, so in your packet on page twenty-two, well, starting on page twenty-one. As John mentioned, this is the maiden voyage of our new sign request form. This one happens to be from a, a group that's working with the town on the Lake Wallace Fall Fest. They're proposing to place about a dozen signs that are going to be eighteen inches by twenty-four inches in size. They want to post them from September eighth through October seventh, so obviously we're already beyond that time. And this is in support specifically of the October Fall Fest at Lake Wallace, which I believe is scheduled for.
October fourth.
October fourth, yep.
Okay. Any discussion about this? Do I hear a motion?
Um, I move that we approve the request from, can you tell me her last name, Jen?
Courtney.
What is it?
Husso.
Husso. I move that we approve the request from Courtney Husso to place signage for the Lake Wallace Fall Fest as applied for.
I'll second that motion.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Okay, six B is a request from our Building Inspector slash Zoning Enforcement Officer slash ADA Coordinator, Paula Asma. He is asking to disband the ADA Committee. We have a committee that was formed back in nineteen ninety-two to evaluate our buildings and come up with an implementation plan for improvements. The committee was originally established to expire upon final report. We assumed that that final report should have been submitted as part of the completion of the implementation plan, which occurred on or about the year two thousand. This committee has not met in five years, so we, we think it's just an oversight. So, we're asking the board to just officially disband this committee and allow Paula to continue as the ADA Coordinator and oversee access to our buildings.
Who's the liaison?
I don't think there is one.
Is there? Is the screen okay up there?
Yeah. The presentation's hidden, that's all.
Yeah, let me get back to.
Okay, so do I hear a motion?
I guess I didn't need to know more about it.
You want to know more about it?
Yeah, like, do we, you've been, I guess Steve's been in town for a while, like, do you think we need it? Do we not need it, I guess?
Not at this time. Five years.
Right. I wasn't sure if it was forgotten, okay. I just don't want those.
I think that's all the information you have.
That is all the information.
And I think going forward, anything new that is built or automatically has to meet it. This was more about updating.
That is correct.
Things in the past.
I didn't want it to go, like, the ADA stuff to go away here, or get forgotten, that's my concern.
And if you read his letter, it says like he is, um, he's going to just take ownership of it.
Right.
Paul is.
So, I think it, at the time, it did not include school buildings, it was just municipal buildings, so I want to be clear on that as well. But there was, you know, as the ADA laws progressed in the early nineties, there was a need to evaluate all of the buildings, determine what the needs were, to bring them up to compliance. I started with the town in nineteen ninety-three, and I remember one of the things that we were doing is just putting the, you know, office placards outside of the offices with braille for people who might be sight impaired. You know, those were the things that we were charged with, with accomplishing, and all of that work has been done, so.
I was still in high school.
Yeah, I was in middle school, so.
So, do I hear a motion?
I move that we formally dissolve the Americans with Disabilities Act Committee effective immediately.
Awesome.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving right along to six C, we have a request for right of first refusal. This is the Lightin property on Rural Street. It's a very small parcel of land, it's being transferred from one owner to another as part of a encroachment. The setbacks aren't being met, so it looks like the property owner's trying to purchase a small piece from the neighbor to make sure that their setbacks are proper. Both the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission have both recommended that the Select Board not exercise the right of first refusal on this. We have a, a new process that we're beginning. We've received some samples of some forms that we're supposed to be using for the board to sign when we don't exercise a right of first refusal. The samples that are in your packet are just samples. In your to-be-signed folder is the official version, which says Select Board and not Board of Selectmen. So, I just wanted to point that out, that we know that there was a, you know, the samples came in that way, but we just published them. So anyhow, that's where we are with it. As part of this new process, one member of the board's going to have to stop at the office and have their signature notarized, so three of you can sign it tonight, and one person would need to come in. That's all I have.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
Can I ask a grammar question?
Okay, yeah.
Normally, we would say, I move that we not exercise our right of first refusal, but aren't we exercising our right of first refusal by refusing?
Yeah, geez. Coincidentally, Mass General Law Part One, Title Nine, Chapter Sixty-One B, Section Nine, says if a city or town elects not to exercise its option, so that's terminology that's being used, not to exercise, so I don't know, I, I have the whole thing here, but I question that too.
It just bugs me every time I, we say it.
Yeah, so I don't know why it's done that way, but.
I move that we not exercise our right of first refusal pertaining to the parcel of land off Rural Street, known as parcel two forty-one dash twenty-two.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, where are we? Oh, we are up to six D. Our HR Director is here, Joanne Cleveland.
Congratulations.
Will be presenting.
What is it?
Cleveland.
Cleveland.
But it's not officially documented everywhere yet.
Okay.
It's easier for me to pronounce it, it's the Azak.
Yeah.
The Azak.
So, a while back, we, myself and Mark, your legal counsel, were here to present updated Corey Sori policy for your review. We heard your feedback, and Mark presented us with a revised policy, which includes updates to include a little bit of language around volunteers and, and/or appointed officials who would not necessarily have direct or unsupervised access. So, it gives us this little bit of wiggle room to not have to Corey every single person, because that is the current policy, is to Corey every employee, every volunteer. So, this gives us a little bit of that leeway to not perform a Corey if we're feeling confident that there's no, no exposure, no interaction with any compromised populations. So, that's the policy that's being presented tonight to you. And the, the language is the same for both the Corey and the Sori, addressing the same category of folks.
Thank you. Open it up for discussion?
I think it's long overdue.
Do I hear a motion?
Uh, question, so these are in our to-be-signed folder as two separate documents. Should this be two separate motions, or can we combine it?
Oh, yeah, Corey and Sori should be separate.
They are two different policies.
Okay, so.
Or, yes.
I think as long as you mention both in your motion, it'd be fine, but if you have two separate votes, you can.
I move that we endorse both the Corey and Sori policies for the town of Beltratown as presented with Labor Council markups.
Second.
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. Six E, I've been speaking with the Chair, and, you know, over the past few months, maybe even few years, we've encountered a lot of times where town bylaws seem to be in contrast with what practices, goals and objectives, or sometimes they just might be outdated. So, we felt it would be best if we would form a committee. Hopefully, we can get at least five town residents that would be willing to go through the bylaws and make recommendations for changes, deletions, new bylaws if we need them. So, tonight's night, it's on the agenda, we're hoping that the board would support that, and we can begin to establish a committee.
I couldn't agree more, they're outdated, and it's, everyone, the residents look at this bylaw for laws, and they're all over the place, so it's like, you have to dig through everything, and it shouldn't be like that, it should be a one-stop shop, corrected, up-to-date. Like, even the, the word like town manager, town administrator, all that stuff has to be changed, you know.
Is, is this different than the government study?
Yes, it, well, it would be, I mean, it's, it would be a part of it. But the, we, the government study, when Steve and I were talking about this, that's still going to go on. But we don't know how long it's going to take that to happen. Meanwhile, there have been discussions going on in town about what our bylaws say and what we're doing in practice. And rather than wait for, I mean, how long it's going to take to have that done, the feeling was, this is a piece of work we could get started on now.
When, when bylaws get updated, changed, that, does it have to go to a town meeting or ballot?
Yes, town meeting.
Town meeting. So, this committee would be presenting recommendations to us to approve it, to go on the warrant?
Correct.
Yes.
And I would anticipate that this would be a, a long-term effort. So, one of the things I was asking, that if we had five members, that we stagger their terms, so we appoint all five upon formation, but we do a single individual for a one-year term, two for two-year terms, and two for three-year terms. So, we always have a, a turnover, and we have knowledge of past efforts. So, just similar to what the Select Board, you know, how they function, there's always an opportunity for a turnover, but there's always also longevity at the same time.
In the past, when we have openings posted, like in the Sentinel, we suggest, you know, certain backgrounds that members would be coming from, in a perfect world. What would we, what kind of backgrounds would we want for this committee, attorney, paralegal, I don't know.
Good question, yeah. I mean, would we want to just review applications and see how we feel they fit, or would we want to advertise that upfront?
Who's going to do the appointing, you or us?
Yeah, I would be, but we can certainly work together on that, it doesn't have to be me, I can submit them to the board for, you know, review.
Well, I mean, an obvious one is if they have experience in doing this kind of work before and understand, you know.
Government background.
What's involved. If you have a working knowledge of the town, that would be helpful, too. I don't know what else.
So, usually when we put together a new committee, like, there's like a charge, and like we have to find all these things, are we going to do that, or are we just going to say we're going to?
Yeah, we can, we can put together a charge. I guess the, the question for tonight is, are you approving of the concept?
Yes, yeah.
If you are, we answer is yes.
So, then what, we need a charge and like a makeup and all that kind of stuff?
And, you know, also, are there any, you know, any people that it would be a conflict of interest for? I don't know, I'm just putting that out there.
Can they be on another committee? Although that would be where you would get people with working knowledge.
I imagine that would be a direct conflict of interest, because most of these committees, for instance, Animal Control Advisory Board, they're, they're tied to the bylaws. I mean, they have, you know what I mean, like, that would be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, that's the, that's the one for me, that.
Former Select members would be part of that.
Because God, we love to talk. Well, you know, I mean, but looking at the conflict of interests, like, what would that entail? So that, you know, we're getting people who are there for the, you know, for the good of the community, not because it would help them personally. So, how to define that, you know. But this, tonight was just like, do we agree in theory that this would be a good committee to establish?
Yes.
Yeah, I just worry about getting people. It's not a reason to not do it, I get that.
So, what are next steps if we're all in agreement that, in theory, this should?
Yeah, we can draft up a charge with the feedback that I received tonight about membership makeup, conflicts, those kinds of things, and then we can present that back to the board in a few weeks.
You know what I'm wondering is, would Greg be a good source?
He probably has something, but I can reach out, we can see what we have, yeah.
Yeah.
I feel like it'd be a good one to have like the town moderator on it.
Oh, yeah, well, you know.
Like as, like, if he's, but as like additional, like that, as the person in charge of it or whatever, you know what I'm saying, like, by being town moderator, part of the bylaw committee, it's just a thought to think about, because they're in charge of all town meetings, it'd be something, maybe it'll work out in that language. Sorry, Ben?
Yeah.
I'm calling him out.
We can have ex-official members, and we can have, you know, Building Inspector, Town Moderator, we can have a Town Planner, you know, people who are involved with the bylaws every day.
Yeah.
John, are you interested in working on this?
Yeah, it'd be fine.
Anyone else?
No. I'm not, I'm going to be really honest, I'm not interested.
Sure.
Oh, could I make, this is kind of a sidebar, but I don't want to forget. So, I noticed in like the newsletters, we've been putting the spotlight on employees, like a spotlight. I'm wondering if we could start extending that to committee members to help drum up community participation on the committees?
Well, and also, commu, committee recognition.
That too, yeah, absolutely, yep.
Yeah, yeah, I can forward it to the committees.
And, you know, it's that everybody gets a little love.
I'm going to forward it to the five members of the Select Board as well. So, get your pencils ready, short paragraphs, if you like short paragraphs, but yes. I think that would be a great idea.
Yeah, I do too, thanks Nicole.
Yes.
Okay, I, I think we're done with that one.
Do we need a motion?
Uh, well, I don't think we need a motion, yeah.
We can get the charge to go first, yeah, we'll vote to approve the charge, so. I'll just put it as a consensus.
Thanks, Steve. Okay, so the future items for discussion. Could I make a suggestion, Steve?
Sure.
Instead of under, having the future items for discussion, because that's the parking lot, right?
Yeah.
Have that not in the discussion slash action items, but have that down, like, I'm thinking at the bottom?
Yeah, ten.
Yeah, ten.
Ten.
So after individual board members' reports, have it as ten.
Okay.
Or whatever. Just because it's a little confusing.
Yeah, we, yeah. We, we thought so, too. You know, because really, we're not talking about any of these tonight, but.
No.
These are all things that are.
One of the things that, what might be a good idea is if, you know, the Corey/Sori was on this, and we did discuss that tonight. So now that this is on here, I'm thinking, we just put one in every, every meeting so that we don't altogether drop it.
Yeah. So what I can tell you about this list is the legislative visit and DLS presentation is scheduled for the first meeting in October.
October.
The sixth, I believe.
Okay. October 6th?
Is that the sixth?
Yes.
Okay. Other items we haven't.
Which one? The legislative visit and what was the other one?
Yeah, and the DLS.
Okay, great.
Oh, both are 10-6?
Yes, at this, at this time.
Okay. Okay. Town managers' report.
Okay. So, once again, I endorsed warrants. I've been meeting almost daily, if not every other day, with our HR Director over health insurance matters. I will say that we are going to be testing the market. We've been working with our broker and we are going to throw a net just to see what's out there. Similarly, with the town accountant, I've been meeting with her regularly about.
So can I go back to that?
Yeah.
So for the health insurance, you are looking at potentially other plans?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we're going to get some pricing, just to see where we are with things.
Yep.
Sorry, could I ask one more question?
Sure.
The, wasn't there like talk of some meetings happening last week?
Yeah, there's been meetings with the, the trust. I've been attending those, so has Joanne. There's also been meetings with the GIC, which I've been in attendance with, so has Joanne. Right now, there's just a lot of information flying around. We're also talking to our Labor Council quite frequently about different matters that involve health insurance. Nicole's been a, a part of a lot of these conversations and, you know, it's very, there's a lot of different pieces that have to come together. And in the meantime, we're, we're still with the trust and we're still following their activities to see where they are. You know, they've, have proposed some changes. Their, you know, the collections are going to start now for the October cycle. So we're hoping that, you know, they can stay solvent, but in the meantime, we're working on contingencies.
Okay.
So that we know we have a place to go. And I think we'll continue that effort until we have a level of confidence. And it may take a while to get that level of confidence back. Right now, there isn't any. So we are watching them very closely.
You know, given the, the interest that, you know, everyone has in this, can this be a, a standing part of your report until such time as it doesn't need to be?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you. And, I'm sorry, and Nicole, if there's anything that, you know, we should know or be involved in.
I do want to say a couple of things when we get to.
Okay.
Our thing.
All right.
Just a couple of things.
All right.
So again, you know, I've been working with the accountant on health insurance matters. You know, I'm not advocating for myself, but I know that Jill and Joanne have spent a tremendous amount of time on this and they're, they're both very vested in making sure we have the right outcome. So I just want to say thank you to them both, because this is a very.
Please tell them thank you from the Board as well.
I did attend a Quavon Advisory Group meeting. We spoke about, you know, the extension of the Aqueduct into additional communities. We talked about the, the bills that are pending at the State House with, you know, additional funding coming back to what we call host communities. We've even talked about the makeup of the MWRA Advisory Board questioning whether there is a host community representation on that. So there's a lot going on right now. There seems to be a lot of interest in the communities surrounding the Quavon to see some change. So stay tuned with that. I'm, I'm doing my best to keep up with it. I have been meeting with department heads to go over goals and objectives to get them started on their respective projects. I did have a department heads meeting last Tuesday. One of the main topics other than health insurance was the goals and objectives, so we're working on that. We also discussed reviewing the town-owned property to come up with a list for, you know, a future auction. So I'm going to be jump-starting that here pretty quick. I attended the tri-board meetings. I've been working with Pathfinder on some matters and, you know, there's a lot of paperwork going back and forth.
Is there going to be a report back on that at some point?
Yeah, yeah. Hopefully, by the next meeting, we'll have some more information on that.
Thank you.
Sports Haven is ongoing. There's pipe going in the ground, there's trees being removed. Three units were removed to make way for a pump station and a water tank in a generator building. So there's.
Units? Like homes?
Abandoned homes.
Okay.
Yeah, were taken out. Some of the biggest news there is the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission had applied for a grant with the EPA, $928,000. We got the paperwork on that last week, so we're going to be extending the contract through a change order to do some additional work.
That's great.
So things are, are really rocking and rolling down there. So one of the things that I had to do was review the engineering agreement for the construction oversight and project management, so that is taking place. We're just, right now, looking at the budget and how all that fits.
And how are the residents feeling about it?
I haven't heard anything bad. I think there's been, you know, we have a meeting later this week, Thursday. I'm looking forward to see what the feedback is. But I, you know, this project's been going on for 25 years in the planning stages. And I think a lot of people never thought they would either live to see the day or just, it would never happen. So I know when the excavators were unloaded from the trailers, there was a lot of, you know.
Exuberance.
You know, people who just couldn't believe what was actually happening. So we are there. We're still short money. We haven't awarded the full value of the contract yet. We are waiting for some additional grants to come in. We should know in October. If we get those, then we'll be, we'll be done. If not, the way that we plan the project is in segments, so that if we leave off in a certain spot, we can pick right back up. We don't have to redo any work or, or wait. So we're going to follow it through, but it's, it's good to see that finally happening.
One last question. So can, can the work continue through winter? Is it, is it weather-dependent?
Yes and no. I guess it depends on the severity of the winter. I imagine there will be a shutdown at some point.
Yeah.
Certain things are weather-dependent and other things could probably continue. So we'll, we'll keep tabs on that. I'll, I'll be updating you every meeting.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Where was I here? Back to goals and objectives. I did meet with the police chief and animal control officer about regionalization. I met with the Collins Center regarding our human services study. The draft is available. I have not gone through it yet, but as soon as I do, I'll, I'll try to get that circulated. Been working with town council on the October 27th special town meeting. I did attend a luncheon with the Ludlow Town Administrator, just collaborating and sharing ideas. Again, back to council with health insurance. School committee meeting I did attend regarding the codes from school vote. I'm sure somebody here will bring that up. We did have a September 11th ceremony at the fire station. The fire chief and his staff put together a, a very nice, respectful ceremony to honor the, the victims of the 9/11 attacks. And I, I am happy that he brought that back. It's been a few years since he's had one. Next year is the 25th anniversary of that event, so he's planning something for that as well, so. And I did meet with the Creative Economy Coordinator. Oh, that meeting got canceled.
That meeting got canceled?
Yes. So I did not meet with the Creative Economy Coordinator. At the time of publishing, I assumed we were going to be meeting and we didn't, so I will take that off. I apologize. I got, I got a roll there reading.
Do you have an update on the grant manager position?
Interviews are going to start next week.
Okay.
Yeah, we have, I think, eight applications.
Eight? Wow, that's great. Well, thank you, Steve. That's great.
You're welcome.
Okay, review of weekly mail? I have a couple I wanted to pull. Letters four, five, and 15. Four is Clifford McCarthy about the Governor's plan to bring nuclear power back to Massachusetts. I, I don't know if you can speak on that or?
Yeah, a little bit. One of our residents, Cliff McCarthy, who we probably all know, visited me the other day and submitted a letter. He's looking for the Select Board to reach out to our legislative body in opposition of, I believe it's, if you have it there, H4144, which is a bill, which is pending at the State House. It's the Energy Affordability Independence and Innovation Act. And if that passes, as currently written, it could pave the way for the construction of small nuclear reactors. I don't necessarily know what the definition of that is, or how that would work, how zoning would plant, any of that, how they would anticipate citing them. But I think it allows for an exploratory of the concept. And there are a lot of people who feel that concept should not even be explored, it should just be off the table. And I believe that that's what he's asking, is for the Board to take this up. So the Board could certainly reach out to the legislators individually. If you want to do that as a Board, I think we could put this on the next agenda and take it up as a topic. So it's, it's up to you.
Well, I'm wondering if we have time because, so I, I have a problem with this. I have a problem that, you know, it seems to have gotten fast-tracked by the Governor. It seems like she snuck it in. It seems like she's not, you know, this is supposed to be going to a public vote, not snuck into a House bill. And so I kind of was hoping we would, could use part of our time for the legislative visit to just ask point-blank how our representatives are going to vote on this, but I don't know if there's enough time for that, if we're not seeing them until, what was it, October?
Six.
Six.
So I'm not sure from a timing perspective, but I've got a big problem with this. And I would absolutely sign any petition in support of, or, you know, against this.
John?
John?
I don't know enough about nuclear energy, to be quite honest with you, to speak on this topic.
It's not even really about the nuclear energy part of it. It's the fact that when this was first passed, however many years ago, I think in the 80s, it had to go to a public referendum. And now, all of a sudden, it's being snuck into a bill without the public even knowing about it. And so for me, it's more about that, because I don't know enough about nuclear either.
I don't know enough about nuclear thing, but we got to look towards the future. So I look at it, I mean, I don't know enough about what's going on with this issue. I have to read more into it to make a real decision. But if we're going to explore nuclear options, I guess, I mean, you got to know everything between propane, natural gas, and put all your cards in wind power. I just feel like I don't know anything about all of it. What's the best source for Massachusetts? I don't know.
But you, as a voter, want to be able to make a decision on that, right?
Yeah.
And that's what she's not letting the voters in Massachusetts to do.
So if you would like, I can have Mr. McCarthy come in for 10 minutes at the next meeting and speak on this or?
Um.
It's up to the Board, I guess.
What, what do you think?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just more interested, yes, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
I'm most interested in what our representatives are going to have to say about it.
Well, we can also make calls.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
And if possible, have them, if possible, they may not, you know, write, write a statement so that we at least know where they stand. Jen, what do you think?
Sure. I think that's a great idea, Steve. Thank you.
So we'll put Cliff on, if he's amenable to come and speak on it. And then, do you want to reach out to Jake and Aaron and just tell them, you know, like what we're, we're looking for? We, we want to make an informed decision, knowing what they, what, where they stand on it would help us.
Yeah, I, I would like to hear their perspective, so I'll pass that along.
Thank you. Also, anything more on that?
Yep.
So number five is the Mountain View Drive.
That's the one I had to.
Letter we got from the district attorney?
Yeah.
So, yeah, the, people may have forgotten about this, but, you know, two years ago, we, we started working with the district attorney's office to investigate some bullet strikes to some homes up on Mountain View Drive. We have the final report from the DA's office. The results are inconclusive. They did test some weapons to see if there was a match, not all. And they were unable to identify any, any weapons that were fired that would have struck those homes. So there's not a lot of information at this time. It does appear as though we haven't had any, any incidents in almost two years, so let's hope that it's over. And, you know, we'll go on from there. But at this point, there's really nothing more we can do. We've exhausted every avenue that we could for an investigation.
Have the impacted residents also received the findings or?
I would have to check on that. The, the chief is on vacation this week. I can, I can ask him to follow up to see if they have. I'm assuming they did. I know that the DA has been in conversations with a lot of them.
Okay.
I know a lot of them were interviewed, so I'm assuming that they know, but I will find out.
I share Jen's concern. That's why I wanted to bring it up tonight, so that the residents there know that we continue to care about this and understanding what their feedback is would also be helpful.
It was disappointing to read that some police departments, not in Massachusetts, down in Connecticut, who participated in the, in some of the trainings on those days, were not willing to participate in the investigation.
Yeah, be transparent.
Yeah. That was bothersome to read.
Agreed. So unless there are any other comments on that, the only thing I, I also wanted to bring up was, we talked about it earlier, but the Western Mass Economic Development Council is holding a conference. It's going to be on Wednesday, October 15th, 2025, 8:30 to 1:30 at MGM Springfield. And that's something that I plan on going to.
I would like to go.
Yep.
Does it cost money to go?
I didn't see a cost to it, but I'm assuming there is. Yeah. So, and Steve, you're going to this?
As of right now, yes.
Yeah. Do you know if there's a cost to this?
I don't know.
All right, so let's.
So you want me to register? So you want me to register the three of us?
Yes, that would be great.
That would be great.
I can't.
Okay, all right.
I'll get it back to you in a, I'm not sure if I can.
Okay, great. Did anyone else have letters they wanted to pull?
Yeah, so I just wanted to point out, we have something from the New England Trail.
Which one is that?
Number seven. It's just their summer newsletter, but just again, going to point out that we have a section of the New England Trail that runs through Belcher Town. So, and it's a national park.
Which is awesome.
Which is amazing. So I just want to point that out. Number 10 and number 14, there's like this stuff about, I'm not really sure how we could help with this request for municipal support for an act to reduce incidence and death from pancreatic cancer.
They want us to send a letter?
Is that what they want?
Yeah.
Because, I mean, I have personally been impacted by folks who have passed away from pancreas, pancreatic cancer is horrific and it's fast, very fast-moving, so I don't know. Do they want us to write a letter? Is that what?
Yeah, it's, they want to send a letter to the chairs of Joint Committee on Healthcare Financing.
Oh, do you want to do that?
And there's official letters from New Bedford and Dartmouth in here. I would, I would sign on to a letter. Do we want to do it as a board?
Yeah.
Do you want to take a look at this?
Yeah, so, yeah.
Oh, you did, all right.
Yeah.
Let me do that?
I can prepare a board and have it available.
They have it right here. Dartmouth, Massachusetts did it, and.
Whatever they did.
You don't even have to recreate it.
Yeah.
No. So is that something we need to vote on?
I think you just got to create it and vote on it next meeting, right?
I feel like we haven't voted on letters in the past, letters of support.
No, I can send it.
Okay. Would you put together something? That's great.
Yeah. And then 11 and 12, there's some more letters in support for the topic we talked about last meeting, about support of the Constitution. Yes, I don't think this is going to go away, so I'm just bringing it back that we've gotten more letters to support for this topic.
Do you know what these letters are? I agree with Jen. I don't think this is going away. I'd like to, I would like to put this on the agenda for the next meeting. But I need, I need the buy-in from the rest of the board. John?
I'm going to say no, because I don't think we should be talking political, one-sided versus the other-sided on the select board. We should stay neutral.
You know you're setting policy just then, by saying that.
Yeah, we're not talking about these letters, though. That's something, you want to talk about something different, that's a policy that's different. But you want to talk about the letters and put these on here?
I'm suggesting that these letters will continue to come to us. Are we going to continue to ignore them?
We already spoke on this.
There's more coming.
Well, I mean, there were two, there were two that I'm aware of that were, could very easily have just been stragglers.
Well, I asked Steve that, and they're not. They came in after the last meeting. Jen, you brought it up.
I did bring it up. I just want to, I mean, I don't know that we, I don't know what to do with it. I guess that's my core issue. I just, I feel personally impacted. There's a lot going on at the federal level, and I personally have a lot of anxiety about it. And I think that we should continue to talk about it. And I don't know that we need to put it on the agenda, per se, or not. I know that there's some conflicting views on that. I just want to bring it up, that everyone should be paying attention and, you know, paying really close attention to what's happening at the federal level.
I agree.
There's now people getting publicly fired, or, you know, there's a lot going on, and I think a lot of it needs to be paid attention to. It's a little scary out there. And I want to reassure the residents that we're aware that it's pretty scary out there.
Well, and that, that we understand that even talking to neighbors or in committees, there's a lot of, you know, us and them going on and finger pointing. And part of the reason why I think it is a good idea to keep bringing this up and talking about it is because if we can't do it as a board, and yet we expect the community members to do it, then what does that say about us? I'm definitely a person that is also a target, and my marriage rights are being threatened. There's, there are things that I'm deeply fearful of, not only for how it affects me personally, but how it's affecting other people. And I do think that it is something we need to continue to talk about, because there, it feels like they are continuing to drill down, community by community. And if we don't continue these conversations, when it, when it hits Belcher Town, I want us to be able to look at each other and know that we've done the hard work of talking about this, that you see me as a very real person, and that some of the policies that he is putting out, and, you know, that side of the aisle is putting out, are really scary, could really hurt me. And I want you to see me as a real person that's going to be definitely affected by And that's why I think it's important that we continue these conversations. Maybe we don't put it on the agenda, but unless, unless the letters stop coming, I do think there's an expectation that we can at least hold the conversation.
Is there a timeframe that you're trying to meet? Because there's a few things that have been developing over the last two days that I'd probably like to talk to you about.
Please.
In private.
Okay. Great. Well, one of the things that we heard tonight was that there is, it seems like there's going to be a petition that goes around that town people can sign. And I also really appreciated the fact that Dorothy could see that some of the language in the original document might have been divisive. And so I'm interested in seeing, you know, what they come back with. Because I do think that everybody here wants to see one Belcher Town, not two or three, but one. And it's the things that bring us together, that we share, a love for, that helps us to be better leaders. So, unless you have anything else to add?
No, that's it.
Okay. Is there any other letters?
I think we have most of them.
Okay. Individual board reports?
The last one, sorry, was the family center in support of the family center. I know we have funding for this family center. We haven't pulled funding from the family center, have we? I just want to.
We have not pulled funding.
So I was confused on what's going on. Do you know anything?
Yeah.
What are they looking for, or what, I guess.
What number was that?
I think in number 11, there is a mention of, one of the women had started.
Yeah.
And alluded to the idea that the board has somehow stopped funding the family center. I mean, I could speak more on that, but I don't know that I want to.
Well, please do.
Really quickly, for those who may or may not know the history of the family center that was started in a church basement, the group, the family center committee itself, looked for grant funding and partnered eventually with the Collaborative for Education that paid for a town staff member to run the family center. And so the funding for the family center came from a grant that was gotten at behalf of the family center committee. And it continued in that manner. The family center was supported by the town, by, they were provided with space. They ultimately went out of Franklin School, and then they were moved up to the state school property that is no longer. After the family center director unfortunately passed away, the collaborative looked for a replacement. The family center committee, for whatever reason, were not happy with the replacement, for lack of a better words, right? And we worked really diligently to sort of mend the relationship between the collaborative and the family center committee. But they ultimately, as a committee and as a town committee, decided to part ways with the collaborative. The collaborative still offers services in town. So those services that were being offered through the employee that was paid for with the collaborative funding is still happening in town.
So we have play groups.
Play groups are still happening through the collaborative. They're taking place, I think, at another location. I think it's also a church. I'm not really sure which church, because my children are too old and I don't really pay attention to those ideas. But if you look at the collaborative webpage, they do hold services. And I actually ran into the woman that runs the program at the Amherst Breakfast that I went to, and she assured me that services are being provided to the town of Belcher Town and its residents. How it's being marketed and how that relationship has now separated from the committee is a separate topic. So the family center committee is a separate entity that had storage that we provided for them, and we have offered space to them, not committed space, which is, I think, what they were looking for. And they've been told, you know, like, come to us with a proposal. And their lead is on is Whitney, who's not here, so I can't speak any further on that topic.
Well, the one thing I do have a question on, and I wonder if you do too, is have they come to the board with an actual request?
No.
Okay, well.
Right. And I think that they, it's been requested of the committee to bring something to this board.
I think Jen and I have been waiting for a proposal now.
We've been waiting.
Two years, yeah.
For years?
Two years, yeah.
So I don't understand.
That's what, I was confused.
Thank you for bringing this up, because it's true. I didn't understand what it is that they want from us. Do we have an understanding of what they want?
The author of the letter, I don't know what they're alluding to, so I think that we can have Whitney reach out to the family center committee and see if they are behind this, if they know anything about why this was included in this letter.
But there's been more than one letter.
Yes.
Asking for support, but it's been a vague request, so I wasn't sure if we were going to be hearing on it formally.
I think we're in a holding pattern, so the committee, all the stuff, was there a request of some sort?
Yeah, but again, it's just that all of a sudden, we're getting, we're seeing these letters, but.
Yeah, I didn't know if something happened recently.
I have no idea.
I hadn't really heard anything. But, so the collaborative is, you know, there are play groups, there are activities, and the family center is doing.
They're doing separate.
Okay, and, and what kind of program are they doing?
Again, I know they'll be at the Fall Fest, doing the Halloween costume swap. I'm not sure what other activities that they have. Yeah, I mean, they, you know, we have the ability to accommodate unhoused programming for whatever they want. We have made that clear. We've talked with them. We said, you know, if you need space, just let us know, and we'll find the space for you.
I mean, ideally, the programs that are being offered through the collaborative, the family center, they had a relatively sound relationship up until the passing of the higher staff. And it's been strained since. And if we could rebuild that relationship and they could work together, then we could have more of us programming, but that's been an issue.
Is there a way that you can help broker a better relationship?
We had many, many conversations.
Whitney on the call still?
No.
Uh, no. She, she just came on. She wanted to hear the EDIC.
Okay.
I think she stayed for one of the calls.
Yeah, I mean, I think she should formally reach out and.
Yeah.
Get some information on why all of a sudden, and is there a proposal forthcoming?
Yeah. Okay, well, I'll talk to her in the morning. I can ask her for that. But short of having no proposal, not much we can do. Okay. I think that's it, right?
Individual.
Excuse me?
Individual.
Oh, individual board reports. Nicole, why don't you start?
Okay. September 3rd, I attended EDIC and my first agricultural commission meeting. September 8th, tri-board meeting. September 9th, school board committee meeting. September 11th, I attended the Hampshire County Group Insurance Trust meeting, and I just want to share a few takeaways from that. There was nothing that they voted on at that meeting. It was almost three hours long. Only 72 subscribers or employees across the entire trust took advantage of moving from the more expensive PPO plan to the less expensive HMO plan. So that was a little disappointing to hear, it was so few.
Moving then this?
So they, so the trust agreed that if anybody wanted to make a mid-year plan change from the more expensive PPO to the HMO, that they could do that. Across the entire trust, only 72 subscribers opted to do that. Only 72. The executive committee had met separately from that and had decided against allowing for any mid-year plan changes. So no, no addition of like a deductible plan in the middle of the year. So if that's going to happen, it'll all happen, right, for July, yeah, for July 1st. One thing, they are still waiting for a response from the state regarding financial assistance in the form of maybe like a bailout. But one thing that came up, and Steve, I don't know if you were a little bit alarmed to hear this, but I was, because they were so nonchalant about this, but they talked about the retiree plans, which is Blue Cross Blue Shield medics plans, running higher than expected by 4% with claims through August. And to me, that just kind of set off alarms, like, okay, well, how long have you been talking about this? I don't know. I'd have to go back through the minutes to see, but to see that another plan is running hotter than normal, and I don't think that's part of the 911,000 that they're asking for us. That's for the, for the active plans, right? Not the retiree plans?
It doesn't include retirees.
Okay. So it is running hot as well. So I guess, I mean, that's something that just kind of rings some bells with me. Yeah, and that was it for that meeting. The other thing I want to bring up, and only Steve knows about this so far, but I had a, I had an interesting week this week. So I was traveling in my car down Allen Road to the intersection of Route 9. And there was a car in front of me that pulled out into the intersection and was T-boned on the passenger side by a Jeep that was lying up Route 9. And this car went one, two, three, three 60s, and slammed into the blinking light. I was the only witness, other than the people that were, that were involved. So I called 911. I got out of my car to make sure that everybody was okay, although this is not something I have ever had to do in my life, so I had no idea what I was doing. But the police came, police and fire, or EMS came really, really fa- came, police and fire, or EMS came really, really fast.
Okay.
Everybody was okay. There were definitely injuries, two rides to the, to the hospital. But it just rattled me, and I just keep thinking about it. And so I do want to talk about this for our legislative visit, for sure. But also, just to say to anybody that's listening, just, just look. Just look, look three times if you have to. Look in extra time and just be so careful when you're crossing that street, and slow down if you're going up and down the street. This Jeep was actually coming from down by Tilton's, so the, the person that drove out into the middle of the road could certainly, if they had looked twice, seen this car coming up. It's not like they were coming from the other side, where it's kind of like a blind spot. And, you know, it was just, it was a mistake. But I mean, he could have died. And I think if he had been hit from the driver's side, he would be dead right now. So I just wanted to kind of talk about that, but it's also something I want to talk about when, when they come to see us.
It's one of the most dangerous intersections in town.
Yeah.
It's one of the most dangerous intersections in towns. There's a lot of deaths there.
And I've always been really complacent about it, but when you actually, but to see it was just like-
I never do.
I was shaking. I was shaking. So.
Yeah, we, we met with Mastod about a year ago on that. And since then, there's been a lot of focus on that intersection by the Mastod engineers. And over the last three to six months, I'm not sure exactly, but there's been a speed board out there, they've been collecting data on actual speeds that people are driving, trying to figure out if that's a contributing factor. For the first period of time, the speed boards were live, where people had immediate feedback on how fast they were going. If you've noticed, they've been dark for the last couple of months. And what they're doing now is it's a blind collection.
Okay.
So, because if people know how fast they're going, and they know that they're speeding, they'll adjust their behavior. So now it's just seeing what people are actually driving. So I know Linda has been following up with them periodically to see where things stand, and I can also check with her again, just to make sure that, you know, they're aware of this latest accident. And Erin, again, Saunders, our representative, has been following this as well. So he's been, you know, quick to us on this one.
Thank you for bringing that up. Slow down, everybody. John?
3 September, I went to the VFW and talked with members as the veterans blaze on. So that's where some of the veterans meet, is at the VFW upstairs. I mentioned that we have two open seats on the veteran committee, so we can try to fill those two open seats to that. On 5 September, we took two veterans in the senior center bus, they're older veterans, down to a luncheon at the vet center. Charlie and I got on the bus, and we rode, rode it down there, and we had free lunch with the veterans. So it was a nice, they have it quarterly throughout the summer. I think they're going to start doing it next, next year, monthly, from June, July, August.
That's great.
So we started with two, and now it's growing. So it's a good, trying to get the veterans back engaged in the town. Tri-board meeting I attended, school committee I attended on 8, 9 September. 10 September, I did the veteran coffee hour. Again, from that little luncheon, we have grown that coffee hour now to new members that we haven't seen before. So it's reaching out more and more, which is great. 11 September, I attended the 9/11 ceremony at the fire station. Firefighter Gerard did a great job. He's the one that kind of organized all that stuff and put it on for us, and went to the chief to kind of get the stuff going back. So they did a great job. 11 September, I went to Pine Valley. I met with the residents there during their annual meeting, or monthly meeting at Pine Valley, to talk to the older, what we could do better for them. They're wondering about their ponds, and if we could help with algae and stuff. And I said I'd-
Wondering about what?
Their ponds. Sorry, my voice is, they have, they have a bunch of ponds in there. They paddle boat, and they fish. It's not just, it's open to the residents, but it's open if they have grandkids and stuff. So I said, I gave them information for the CPC grant, to try to apply for that, see if that would help out. If not, we could follow up with our, with Sarah, and see if she could ask anything. Or even Tri Lakes, maybe can help with that, if they start doing algies for the lakes or something. I'm going to start meeting with them quarterly. They're inviting me back, and they're seeing, maybe Steve's available, and we'll set a date or something. They just want to meet everybody. They feel like we forgot them. And I said, we're not forgetting you. It's, it's just a big part of our community. So they're very open and welcoming to us, and I just want to know that they're respected here in town, just as everybody else in the residents are.
Thank you.
14 September, I was, which was yesterday, at the fair committee. So if you all know, the Tensers is going to set up for the fair. It's probably my favorite time of the year. I like it more than Christmas. It's shake cattle and roll this year. I have special hats for all of us as select board members. I'm going to bring them tonight, their little cowboy hats, and they're shaped as cows. So I got one for all of us, that we can all march in a parade, if you're interested.
Great.
I think Steve and I are trying to organize 8:30-ish, right, is the best time to get up here?
Yeah.
And if you see the candy, it was donated by a past member.
Perfect segue, yeah. So people are probably wondering why we have all these bags of diabetes in front of us. We're not going to eat these ourselves, they're for the, they're for the fair. They were donated by a resident. I'll let somebody else speak on that. So the streets are closed around 9:00 AM on Saturday morning for the parade. We generally convene at the Finty House, right outside here in the parking lot. Step off at 10 sharp. So I try to tell people, you know, if you want to drive into this area, try to get here around 8:30. Parking could be tough. You can certainly find it. Probably not at Town Hall, because it plugs up pretty quick with demand, but.
So where do we park?
Anywhere you, you can find. Yep, yep. If you get here earlier, the better.
All right.
If you get here early, if you get here early enough, you can find the spot.
Okay, all right.
I mean, maybe, maybe some of you would want to park down at the other end of the parade, and carpool up, and then you can ride share if you don't want to walk. So.
Got it. I'll talk.
So perfect segue, Jen. Thank you.
It's a great time of the year. I mean, it really brings residents together. So it's like a homecoming for a lot of us townies, if you want to call us townies. So it's, it'll be a good time. There's a lot of events planned for it. So if you're around, come to the fair. If you don't want to come to the fair, it's free. So remember that, it's free. The biggie, the biggie costs money. The fair does not cost money. One of the only free fairs around. So there's a lot of cool things. Hay Biltas, and they have ponies this year. They're doing a pony, like little kids are going to be doing their pony horse draw this year. So it's going to be like 10-year-olds with these little ponies. So it'll be kind of cool, something new to the fair this year, to a little spice it up a little bit in the pulling ring. If not, the Hay Biltas, so on Saturday night is the most-
Are you doing?
I'm not doing it. I never do it. But I will be at the Hay Biltas, probably in a bucket or something like that. I've been there since I was like 16. So it's like a tradition. Everyone has their jobs at the fair. They've been around for a while. They all have traditional stuff. You eat a certain food at a certain time. You go get your grinder here, your french fries here. See if you can test it out.
You're like at the fair, just listening to them. No, I, I also love it. I mean, we all do. We'll all be there.
And everyone's welcome, everybody. And no dogs, unless it's service dogs. I just want to tell people that. Leave your dog at home, unless it's a service dog.
Smoking on the come?
Of smoking.
All right. Are we buying more candy? That's my, my big question. So this is one, two, three, four, five. Do we need more candy?
Oh, no.
I have, I have more candy.
I'm going to BJ's this week. If you tell me how much to buy, how much more to buy, I will, and then I'll-
I think it's probably going to be a dollar amount, you know, like-
Okay.
Or whatever you tell us.
Okay. Well, I'm thinking quantity amount. How much more, how many more bags do we need?
I already bought a bunch, so.
You bought a bunch?
I bought a bunch.
I haven't bought any.
I haven't bought any either. So I'm thinking, I don't know.
Well, what if, so last year, we filled up that basket, the wheelbarrow basket, and then we have-
Do we still have that?
I think I got it from my friends, so I'll borrow it, you know, let her, I can borrow it.
I'm just so excited for the fair. Can't wait.
We can do this after the meeting.
We can do it after.
All right.
Okay. Um, can, oh, I'm sorry, you go, and then I'll have, and then I have a question.
That's okay. I don't really have very much, because I sent my kid to Madrid last week.
Yeah.
It was fine. But now he's in Madrid. So, so now, oh, I had a question. So I got some questions about the kids having carpool fundraisers, car wash fundraisers, when we have a water ban. And I didn't know if that's, like, who approves the car wash? I mean, I don't want the kids not to have the car wash. It's not what I'm saying.
I thought I heard that the last one was the last one of the season. I thought it read that, the cheerleaders were the last.
Yeah, I'll check the calendar.
I think some of the kids got harassed, which is not really cool, for the kids to get harassed. Not the kids, the kids didn't like set up the car wash.
You're bringing up a good point. If there's a, you know, town-wide-
Water ban.
It's probably not good form to doing a car wash.
Yeah. I'll look at the calendar. If there's any car washes in the schedule, I will let the water district know and make the decision, yes or no. And if it's no, we'll just have to tell them.
Yeah.
Oh, and one last thing. There was a tree that fell down close to a bridge in the Lake Wallace Trail that Linda is going to be looking at before the Fall Fest. But folks are ignoring the caution tape, so I just wanted to tell people, please don't. The tree is not in imminent danger of falling down, but like, you never know. Like, it's, you don't know how, like, dangerous or not dangerous it is, so.
Well, so it could be imminent.
It could be. I don't know. I'm not a tree expert. All I know is I've seen pictures when I've walked past it myself.
It fell already?
It fell, and it's hanging precariously. It didn't fall on the bridge, thank goodness, but it needs to be removed, like, and stood up, right? Like, so it's, it's just-
This is a danger.
Nobody should go on that bridge.
Yeah, it's dangerous.
Yeah.
Especially, we're having an event there in a couple weeks.
Well, no, I'm, we're talking about, there are other people that have reported anecdotally that people are ignoring the fact that there's caution tape and like soft horses, says, please, you know, like, don't go there, right? Like-
What's going to be, what, what, what is going to be done?
Linda's working on it.
Oh, Linda's working on it.
Okay.
Contractor will be in town next week.
Oh, excellent.
Yeah, yeah.
You're on it, Steve. You are on it. And Linda's on it.
I'm just mentioning, people should be respectful of the caution tape.
I have a question.
Anything else?
This, um, this notice of refusal needs to be signed by all of us, but one of us has to go to Finty to sign in the presence of a notary. Who would like to do that?
I'll go.
Okay. So do not sign this one, okay?
I'm not going to sign that. All right. Well, I'm just going to say quickly, I did go to the tri-board meeting. I went to the EDIC meeting, and then had several additional meetings with different committee members. I went to the Creative Economy Committee, but it wasn't a formal meeting. I went to the school committee meeting, and I also went to the 9/11 ceremony, which, I concur with Steve, it was very well done, very respectful. And it really felt good to be with the folks at the fire station. So I urge everybody to go next year. Okay. Are there any questions for the media? Malina?
Okay.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Executive session.
I move that we enter into executive session, not to return to open session, MGL Chapter 38, Section 21, Subsection 6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate if the chair declares that an opening meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body, Cold Spring School, and subsection 7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and any requirements to approval of executive session minutes.
Roll call?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.